Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen September 25th meeting. It's 5:30 PM at Memorial Town Hall. I'm calling the meeting to order. Tonight, most meetings, the first agenda item is usually any sort of announcements that the board has or the town administrator. So, Marlene, why don't I start with you? Is there anything you wanted to announce this evening?
Other than just the items already on the agenda, but I do not have anything other than the items on the agenda.
Okay, so those items-
Or what's in the packet.
Yeah, so that item is Smith Academy Homecoming. Will be October 19th. And the town hall hours, starting a week or two ago, actually.
Right, just to get the message out there to people, yeah.
To get the message out. If you aren't aware, the town hall hours are Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM until 5:30 PM. The hours still vary with some offices, but the Fridays are left open for the contractors to come in and do some of that heavy-duty work on Friday and into the weekend if necessary. So, that's the reasoning for that. So, town hall opens earlier and stays open later, Monday through Thursday.
Which is important for people because water bills are going out, right?
Yes, they will be going out.
Oh, okay. But people might want to come in and pay them, so it's important that they know those hours.
Yep.
People should want to come in and pay them.
We'll want to come in and pay them.
Let's hope they come in and pay them. Okay. Diana, did you have any announcements that you wanted to make?
No, just, you know, my every meeting reminder that gala tickets are on sale for the 350th kickoff on New Year's Eve. There's Hatfield350.org is our website. There's also information on there about all of our upcoming events and a link to where you can go to buy tickets. We do expect it to sell out, so people who want to go to this event should not wait to buy those tickets.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Ed, did you have anything?
I just have one announcement. Next month is October. Just like to remind people, it might be a good time to check your smoke detectors, change your batteries, make sure they're all working because it's usually not the fire that kills people, it's the smoke. And smoke detectors do save a lot of lives, so I just want to remind people in October to do that. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's great advice. I think they, usually when we do the clocks ahead and clocks behind, that's usually the kind of the trigger for people as a reminder. So, thank you.
Chairman, just one more item in the packet. The US Senate has designated October 28th, 2019, as honoring the nation's first responders' day. And I just think it's important to recognize our own, you know, first responders here in Hatfield and-
Absolutely.
-express our appreciation for everything they do.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna fold that into this, but if you had something you wanted to say for us-
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
So, yes, it's totally appropriate to recognize our first responders. And to that end, I want to announce publicly that we have received the resignation of our fire chief, Steve Gahn, who is going to pursue new professional opportunities. Obviously, we're saddened to hear this. Steve is a 23-year member of the department, but he certainly hopes to stay a part of the department. And, here he is. Just talking about how sad we are to get your resignation, Steve. Yeah, so, we thank you very much. But Steve will be staying on until the end of January, so we're grateful for that and we're grateful for the years of service as well.
Was it 350th?
Yes, right, because we've been working with Steve on 350th issues. We're, you know, gonna have a lot of crowds around and it'll be important to coordinate with our public safety department. So, Steve, thank you, and we look forward to working with you on moving the department forward in the meantime, and we wish you luck.
Yep, I want to echo Diana's sentiments on behalf of the board and myself personally. Stephen, I can't believe it's been four years already, but, you know, thank you for everything and good luck with your next endeavors. Thanks for hanging in here till the end of January.
Also, thank you for bringing the ambulance up to paramedic level, so thank you for that.
Lots of good things. Okay. Thank you. Public forum, is there anybody here for public forum?
Hi, I am here for public forum, but rather than delaying the first two topics on your agenda tonight, if perhaps I could share what I have to share under the agenda item financial reports, that might be a better place for my thoughts, and it might give you guys an opportunity to respond as well because public forum is, I understand, it's just kind of a one-way presentation. So, if that's okay with the chair, I would like to postpone my comments until the financial report.
Okay. All right.
Not sure what you're gonna take up on that.
Right, we're just gonna, I think it's just kind of a high, just an update is where we stand, actually.
Okay.
So, if there's something more you wanted to say, now might be the time to say it, Mike.
Okay, all right. So, this has to do with the management letter that was provided by the accounting firm after their financial audit of fiscal 18, which was completed and supplied to the town in draft form on July 16th. This is the management letter. I don't know if that's been finalized yet or whether it's still in draft form, but here it is, September, and, you know, we don't have a final management letter, at least to my knowledge, Marlene. Maybe we have one, but I don't, it's still in draft form. But there are several things in this management letter that I don't know if the selectmen have really read this thoroughly that concern me as a taxpayer. And if I could have a few minutes, material weaknesses that they have pointed out in our accounting and accounting systems that, to me, are somewhat concerning, and I'm just wondering if and when we will address these issues. One is the cash reconciliation process. This is a repeated material weakness from other management letters in the past. And basically, one paragraph here says, "The town's consultant reconciled all 12 months subsequent to year-end. At the end of the process, there was a variance in the cash close to the prior year. At the end, cash was $50,000 short, which approximated the same variance at the end of the prior year." And so, the accounting firm is saying, "We should deal with that." And two things should happen. One is that for any variance like this, it should be investigated. And so, if this has been investigated, and I'm not sure if it has, I knew that there was a accountant that came in to take a look at the situation when the collector left, but nevertheless, this $50,000 variance still exists and has never been reconciled. So, there's two issues. One is, has it been investigated? And the other is, when will we reconcile the $50,000 shortfall in our accounting system? And so, they're saying either you either raise the money via taxation and basically book some income, and that takes care of the deficit, and the cash comes up to $50,000 where it should be. This is our accounting books. So, basically saying that the town should make a decision on the variance that currently exists, and you can raise it on the tax recap sheet or at town meeting, but, you know, we need to do something with that because it still exists on our books. So, I would suggest to the selectmen that we take some action and do that. The other item is one called "New Findings" under the management letter, and this concerns me a little bit, too, because it says, "The final closed balances included deficits in special revenue and capital project accounts." And again, this was written in July about fiscal 18, but nevertheless, written in July. These ultimately reduced free cash and include the following, and there are two deficits that they point out. One is a deficit of $130,000 that existed because the town failed to borrow on a short-term basis for Phase 2 of the town hall. Okay? And the other is, there were 12 special revenue accounts that had approximately $82,000 in deficits that were not funded subsequent to year-end. You add those two together, that's well over a couple hundred thousand dollars. If what I'm reading here is that our free cash was curtailed by $200,000 as a result of these deficits, we really ought to be doing something about that because we went into fiscal 19 and now fiscal 20 with these deficits still on our books, and I don't believe we've addressed these. Maybe we have. So, I just wanted to bring these to the board's attention, and I do think it's something that would be great if our consultant slash town accountant appeared perhaps at our next meeting and kind of said, you know, "What's going on here? What kind of actions are we taking or have we taken to address these issues?" There are also a number of other weaknesses and material weaknesses at that level that are addressed in this management letter, which no one talks about. So, it's one of these things that we shouldn't ignore, and it's because we ignored a lot of this stuff in the past that brought us to the major challenges that we had up until a year or so ago. So, I mean, we shouldn't not address these things. We shouldn't just let these ride, and we should finalize this management letter. We should respond to it.
All right. Thank you. So, I know it's not a back-and-forth, but I feel, given your comments, you know, I should respond.
Sure.
So, what we've done in the past is the Board of Selectmen, you know, our team have gotten together with the finance committee and review the draft letter and go through it, kind of what you said, and kind of go through it and pick it apart. Honestly, we have not done that yet. I mean, it's, you know, we're coming into fall now. Summer's over, vacations are over. So, I'd like to think that's something we're gonna be able to do, you know, by late October, if possible. We have every intention, Mike, of going through it and addressing everything that's in there with ourselves and with our accountant. And we will respond to it, and we will release it, you know, summer, and I'm not making an excuse, but the reality is, summer's tough when people, you know, to get eight people together to try to review it. So, I guess I just wanted to say that.
Could I just add something, please?
Sure, absolutely.
So, Mike, I'd just like to say that the items that you did refer to, actually, the Board of Selectmen, all of us, the financial team, were aware of those weaknesses. They were pointed out during that actual fiscal year by Bay State Municipal Accounting Group. So, we were aware of them. Some of them have actually been corrected and we're working to, you know, correct things or how some of those transactions were handled. There were, you know, earlier in that fiscal year, staff has changed as a whole, when I say as a whole, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee have not gone through each item. But those items, those weaknesses, we were aware of those during the fiscal year.
Yes.
We talked about them when the auditor was here. We, you know, and again, we were aware before the auditor even came here because Bay State had made us aware of those.
As far as I'm concerned, I just want, again, bring these to the surface again.
Right.
And Brian's basically saying, hey, we're gonna get together with the Finance Committee to talk about these, finalize the management letter, and, you know, I'd certainly like to be there when you guys talk about that.
And so, the town-
They are issues that are-
The town normally responds in writing with a course of action.
Right.
And actually, some of those changes have already taken-
Excuse me.
So, it's just, it just is not in writing.
Right.
My comment?
Yeah, of course.
I mean, as you know, the last three years or so has been, a lot of changes have been made, a lot of corrections. This is the first year we got all our free cash, so we're doing, they released $700,000 in free cash, I'm just saying. And these other items, we've been on top of, we've been looking at it through the last management letter, so we're getting there, Mike. I mean, we're not delaying things. I think we're in better shape today than we were the last couple of years with the changes that have been made, but it's a slow process. It's taken a couple of years to get there because of such a mess it was in. So, on one hand, I do understand your concerns. We are looking at your concerns. We will meet with the Finance Board, and thank you for bringing that forward and reminding us. So, just want to say that I think this board's been working very hard the last few years with the Finance Committee and our Bay State to make corrections, so.
Yep, okay. I don't want to go over this.
Okay. Nope, thank you.
And we don't want to go back to where we were, honest.
Okay. Is there anybody else here for public forum? All right, we've got, you're welcome, three sets of minutes to approve. We've got April 30th, June 7th, and June 17th.
I have four.
So, the May 22nd, we're not gonna do tonight.
Okay, we're not gonna do that.
And they weren't on the agenda, so we don't have to table them or anything yet.
That's fine.
Yeah, because they were just handed out, so we'll do those at our next meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept minutes for 6/7/2019, 6/17/2019, and 4/30/2019.
Okay, motion's been made for April 30th, June 7th, and June 17th for the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second them. I wasn't present for the April 30th, but I believe I can still vote to accept them.
Yes, it's just an administrative-type thing, so. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any corrections on any of the minutes or updates or changes? Okay, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you very much. All right, we've got a few applications for licenses and permits under our posted business. So, the first one we have is for a liquor license for September 29th to support the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts. It's a one-day license, but that's the "We'll Bike for Food" after-party. All the paperwork's in order, the COI Certificate of Insurance is there. Police Department's been notified and coordinated their opinion and suggestions, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant a one-day wine and malt license to the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts for the "We'll Bike for Food" after-party on September 29th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do either of you have any questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hope you have a great day.
It's a great event, so.
Yes, it is.
If you guys want to come, do the after-party.
Thank you. We have another license for the Hatfield Firefighters Association, also at the Lions Club, for a one-day license for the, on October 12th, that's the annual bonfire and concert.
Do we get a certificate of insurance for this?
They were finalizing three additional people to be added to the rider this afternoon that we were notified of, but we have paid the fee, the application is in, and they were just finalizing the paperwork this afternoon. She hadn't gotten it to my email by the time I got here.
Okay, so Bob, is that something that we'll get in the next couple of weeks? You know, I mean, we can approve-
Probably by tomorrow.
Okay, so-
We can approve it pending the-
We can approve it if that's okay, and then that way we have the attachment, we'll put everything together.
Yeah, we have paid it and everything else.
Yeah, and you've done it in the past.
Just finalizing the document.
Yep, okay, cool.
I'll make a motion that we grant the Hatfield Firefighters Association a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for the Hatfield Bonfire on October 12th, 2019.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions? So, under comments, so we will-
Oh, excuse me, pending-
I was just gonna say, so we-
The insurance certificate.
Yeah, pending this COI Certificate of Insurance.
And I also had an add-on that I forgot about. In the past, if we need to do a letter, we've requested to waive the fee, being that we are a 501(c)(3) organization. The previous six years, that has been what has happened, so we would request the same thing, and if we need a letter, we can get that drawn up by tomorrow.
I'd add that to my motion, waiving the $75 fee.
So, waiving the fee and awaiting the certificate of insurance.
Pending, yep.
Okay?
Should be tomorrow.
Okay, so everyone's on board with that? Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
A good, great event. Good luck.
It sure is.
I'll be there.
Speaking of the Hatfield Bonfire, we also, from Chief Gahn, have a request to actually have a one-day permit for the ceremonial bonfire to be held that evening.
I'll make a motion to accept the ceremonial bonfire permit.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Seconding.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Oh, we got a lot going on with this whole fire chief thing. All right, next on our posted business under topic two, we just have some suggestions, some ideas, some potential changes to the position as it exists today. And, I don't know, Marlene, do we want to go through this now? I mean, I know it was in our packet. Do we want to digest it? Are you guys ready to have some of the discussions? I don't know what-
I have a, I just-
Or just ask questions or-
I just don't like the way it's written. I find it kind of choppy. It's not, it could be much more concise.
My understanding is just to have some-
It kind of goes back and forth on topics, so it's not necessarily the content, but the presentation of it.
Yes, Marlene and I talked about that. So, this, if I may-
Goes back.
Yeah.
Why don't we ask Chief Gahn to come up and then-
It's really one of those things that nobody gets whipped out from here. It's a town that's like, it's seen four or five lives, if not eight or nine lives.
Right.
And actually, Marlene, when we spoke, I went in, when I brought her my thoughts on, and what she gave to me, which that's a 2004 document. And so, I brought her my thoughts, which is what I gave to you, and I'm open to just answering questions. And interesting, when I went in, I said, "You know, Marlene, this is kind of all over the place, you know? If you look at it, the special consideration is a driver's license. Well, that's not a," you know, and I told her, "You know, if you look at others, there's, you know, the town of Berlin was one I gave her example of doing a similar process, and it's structured so much differently." And I think that it definitely needs some wordsmithing or word.
Well, that's embarrassing, so it was done when I was on the board last night.
Well, I'm not saying anything.
And that's why we want, we ask the fire chief to take away, you know, to-
Again, content-wise, there wasn't anything that really jumped out at me. I just don't like-
You know, one of the things, just to bring up to date, you know, simple stuff like, you know, it cited what permits the chief could, and inspectors you would do in 2000, or she would do in 2004.
Right.
And in fact, the best way to actually word that is they do inspections and distribute permits in accordance with Commonwealth and Mass Regulations, Mass General Laws-
General Laws.
And the town bylaws.
Right.
So, that stuff, you know, it's an easier way to bring this focus. So, when the fire marshal's office or someone changes a general law, it's not hindering the life and the effect of any job description. That's what some of that stuff is.
Right.
So, you said you submitted a, because I'm a big one for not recreating the wheel.
Exactly. So, like, the town of Berlin has a thing, I'm happy to send a couple of those to all of you, to Marlene. I could send those to Marlene, and then she could ship. But there's a couple others that's out there. There's job descriptions, obviously, you know, and it has some more structure to it.
Right. Well, I mean, this doesn't even, the word "strong chief" isn't in here. There's nothing in here about-
Right, we talked about referencing statues.
Residency, which I don't know that we've even made a decision about that, but it's silent on that, and-
The "strong chief" thing is interesting enough, that's in the first paragraph of the Berlin position, where it says, "Hey, this is, you know, general law 48, section 42," or something like that. You know, that is, truly should be in the description here, and her and I talked about that in the office the other day.
Right.
So, I'm happy to send some descriptions to you and let you, like, I get them all the time.
I'd rather do that. I think it's premature to talk about, I think it might be a bit of a waste of time to talk about it as it exists.
I get it, too. The Fire Chief Association of Massachusetts, I get them all the time, so I can just take six or eight and send them in PDF form to Marlene, and she can send them to all of you if you want.
Okay.
Good with that.
Yeah, especially if you could point, I mean, maybe, there might be differences in towns. If you could sort of point out, you know, in there where there might be a difference between-
Absolutely. That's easy enough, yeah.
But the majority will be similarities, I would imagine.
That's what I would assume, yeah.
There is some stuff, there's some language we talked about even today. We talked about some wording and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm with you. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to take what exists and tweak it for Hatfield.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how I foresee it.
And modernize it.
And modernize it.
Right, exactly. And it should just be, it should be concise, it should read in a way that makes sense. This kind of goes back and forth, and I just-
The driver's license thing jumps right out.
Yeah, I know, that was, I was like, "That's it? Wow, I could do it." Yes. So, okay, I'm, that would be my-
Yeah, so why don't we just, yeah, we'll wait some-
I'll send that up really soon. Like I said, I have one, just because I pulled it out and I was looking at them, saying, "Wow," I was looking at that.
Right.
I was, I can grab five or six off the list and just-
And maybe we can have, we, and if Stephen's available, too, maybe once we get those and have a chance to peruse them, maybe we can have a working session or something.
That would be really good.
If there's like an afternoon.
Answer it whatever it is.
I mean, it just, you know, where there's no other agenda items and we can sort of go back-
I think a working session would be great.
Go back and forth and have the conversation, line it up, and then get rolling.
Sounds great. I will get that soon, within five or six days.
We'll check our four, five schedules.
Yeah, I mean, Stevie, you and I talked about, you know, you being willing to stay till the end of January is terrific, but time's gonna fly right by, and you're gonna, all of a sudden, we're gonna be in the holidays and everything, so the sooner we can work on this, the better.
I'll push you five or six within the next five days.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cahill? Could you share with the people who are watching, is there a process in place to hire Stephen's replacement by a certain period or by a certain date, and what will that process be? Have you guys developed one?
We just got the letter. We just got the letter.
So, to answer your question, the process will be, yes, there'll be a screening committee formed. We're gonna put the job description, job specification, after we get this, have a working session, figure it all out, and then get the ball rolling. So, if Stephen's on till the end of January, I'd like to hope a new chief would be on, I don't know, see, what, middle, beginning of January, middle, I mean, you know-
He's got a smooth transition.
Some overlap, you know, for a smooth transition.
He's not transitioning on holidays, but we're, that's why January is-
Right, right.
Right, and we appreciate that. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we're off the fire department conversations.
Thanks, Stevie.
Yes, thank you. All right, Marlene, the town administrator report. Let's see, we have the update.
Yes, financial report. We had a finance meeting last week, which Bay State Municipal Accounting Group, Dustin Cole, had phoned in. And I can tell you, as of yesterday, the Community Preservation, one form that was due September 15th was submitted yesterday to DOR.
Okay.
Bay State's continued to work on reconciling 19. A big component of that is reconciling the receivables. And he's pretty much completed reconciling other items. Sharon, if you want to jump in here, there was some, I know there were some things that your office was working out with him, but reconciling the receivables is a big part of it right now. Progress is being made on the recap sheet and Schedule A. We talked about completing, closing out fiscal year 19, and he feels confident that October 15th, he will be ready to close 19 and send an entire package to the auditor to review. The auditor would like a few days to go through that package to make sure everything is in order, and provided it is, he will contact Hatfield to set up an audit schedule for the middle of November, middle to late November.
Nice.
Nice.
So that'd be two...
That's early for us.
Yes.
It's actually timely, as it should be. So I'll, kidding aside, you know, to Ed's point earlier when he was speaking with Mike, it's taken a while, but we're getting there. You know, we're this close. So I hope we don't find any last-minute landmines in there, but...
Did you have anything you wanted to add to that report?
Yes, we touched base today, and so he needed a few other parts from the collector's side of the office. We've worked really hard this year to clean up all our receivables. So he needed some huge document from us to do that.
It's a very lengthy report.
But he got that, and we had a good conversation with him today, so.
Good, looking good. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But I'm up next after that, so I figured I better come up.
Okay, well, thank you for your help with that stuff.
Yes.
As you know, the collector is proceeding with tax title. That is due... Well, the notice was advertised in the newspaper. Those people that are in tax title have until October 1st. And then after that, the properties will be leaned, and you'll proceed with the process.
I did not see the paper. Do you have a listing in there that I could just take a peek at?
I do, exactly. So there were 18 properties that were in the paper, not Saturday, a couple days ago, the previous Saturday. It's also posted on... I don't actually know that it went on the new website. I'll get it to Key to go up on the website, so that these people have plenty of opportunity to do it. And unfortunately, I've gotten three out of the 18 to come in and pay. So, you know, we hope that the rest come in and pay, because it's much better for us if they just pay their taxes. But the next process is to put a lien on their property. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you, just for clarification. So they have until October 1st to either pay or make payment arrangement?
Nope.
No, they have to pay. They have to pay it in full by October 1st. Okay, good.
Because what happens for you, Diana, who's... This is new. I don't know that they were doing tax title when you were selecting last time. What happens is it just protects the town, so that if somebody filed bankruptcy...
Right.
Or they sell the property, the town is a stakeholder there. They get paid first.
First, always.
So that we get our money. So it's a scary thing to put a lien on it. We're not in the business of taking people's houses. We're just trying to protect the town's monies.
Our best interest.
Should the property ever transfer.
Exactly. So we're just trying to make sure we're lined up. This is the first year... Last year, you weren't here, I had to do, from 2013 to 2018, I had to advertise them. So we are now on psycho, and we're advertising when we're supposed to be advertising. So you'll see other towns doing it at the same time. So we're right, you know, in line with where we're supposed to be for those. So hopefully, the other few people will come in. If they can't afford to pay it, we still put the lien, and we do then try to set up a payment plan with them, so that we can get them out of it. But we want to make sure we protect ourselves.
Nice job.
Sure. How much money is involved in the 15 that are still standing? Do you have that?
The 15 that are in this group, or the tax title in general?
Well, you said you're out of the 18 and three have paid, so there's 15 remaining.
Guys, let's go through the board, please.
Sure.
Yep, sorry.
If you can answer the question, if you have it.
Yeah.
If you have it.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine. But there's 15 properties.
There's 15 properties. I don't have it right here. It's in my office. I didn't... I brought water billies, water stuff, the next thing on the list for you.
Yeah, sneaking up which.
See, just picking them next.
Yeah, so the water department just completed reading meters, and water bills have been printed, and they are ready to go out. Those will be due November 1st, as will be the real estate bills. And so we can take up the commitment, the water and sewer commitment.
Some of the... But we... Some of us, or maybe everybody, has received that November 1st fill, right?
The real estate bills, the two quarters were already out. Anybody who bought a property since, you know, the bill mailing out, have gotten theirs. So we just do one mailing at this time of year for the water sewer bills. We hadn't gotten to meet... We had discussed trying to get together with the water and sewer department to talk about increasing more than a 2%. And that didn't happen for this cycle, so we went up the raises. So one of the things I wanted to just mention was that the water rate was 436. The new rate is 445. The sewer was 697, and the 2%, it brings it up to 711. And then the other rate, which I don't know that... I call it the agricultural rate, but I don't know if that's the exact wording that Tony would use. It went from 314 to 320. So those are your three rates with the bills that are going out, you know, by the end of the week. And they will be due, as you mentioned, November 1st. So we'd love for them to come in and pay, but they can also pay online, and they can use their lockbox feature. So town halls are a little crazy these days. If you don't have to come here, it's very loud here, but if you'd like to come, we're more than welcome to have you. So I did give you guys a letter. It's really actually from you to me, giving me the totals that, you know, we're committing. So it's a total of $617,521.16, which is actually up a fair amount from last summer, but I think it was a hotter summer. So I think, you know, more pools, more water usage. So last year at the time was $560,000. So we're up, you know, $50,000. So 10%.
Yeah, that's great. So do you actually, Marlene or Sharon, do you need a motion for these amounts?
Yes, please.
Is that the deal spelled out?
A motion. A motion to set...
To commit the taxes.
Okay.
Commit those taxes for me to bill out.
I will make a motion that we commit... Do we have to do them individually?
I would just reference water, the amount, sewer, the amount for a total of...
Water bills in the amount of $322,226.91. Sewer bills in the amount of $294,819.25, for a total of $617,521.16.
And that includes that 475, right?
Oh, and I'm sorry, 475 for a flat rate.
Flat rate. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good.
Quick question. How does the... Marlene, you might know this. How does the $617,000 or $18,000 total compare to what we budgeted for this year?
Oh, the $617,521?
Yeah. We budget, obviously, and that would schedule, it has other fees coming in, revenues coming into the community.
How does it compare to the operations?
No, what we budgeted.
Well, what our estimate was.
We budgeted an income level from the enterprise funds, basically.
Don't have that in front of me. I know what you're talking about. Estimated revenues, right.
I don't have it in front of me either. If I were to answer that...
The spreadsheet that we use for town.
The spreadsheet, I would think, I would think that we went in with a 2% increase off whatever last year's total was. You know what I mean? Because we knew there would be...
Right.
I'm guessing. I'm totally guessing, but that would make sense, not having any of the paperwork in front of me from our budgets. So if it was 500...
Because we do project... So if the flash is almost 560, we probably budgeted 580 or something like that.
I would say that would...
Yeah, I mean, we do project revenues.
Yeah, I would guess that's a legitimate...
We usually do.
Because we don't want... We never know, right? We don't know if it's going to rain, or be a drought, or what's going to happen. So we don't...
I would agree. I think we put in 2%.
I would think so.
Because we knew we would get a 2% increase in at least the rate, so.
Yep.
So at some point, we do need to get on the agenda to have the conversations.
We do. Yep, we need to have that, well, you know...
Actually, Phil and I were talking today, because we're working with Dave Prickett on a water and sewer rate study. And we're going to meet with Dave Prickett, and hopefully, in October, if we're ready to sit down with the Board of Selectmen and Finance, can we discuss that?
Yeah, I think now, goes back to my earlier point, I think, with summer's over, September vacation. So I think we're going to be able to start getting with finance and others. That and some other topics from last year that we said we wanted to bring up in the fall, you know, long-range capital plan, all that stuff. So we need to get the ball rolling on those different things. At least get a little bit of traction, at least. All right. Thank you, Sharon. You got more?
That's all you need for me.
That's it?
Good, thanks.
All right.
Mike, I can get back to you if you'd like tomorrow. I'll check that and see what he gives.
I'll go and get the spreadsheet at some point. I have what you have, so I think... Don't worry about it, Marlene. Don't spend your time on that.
Thank you, Sharon.
Nice to always have more revenue than we projected.
Oh, absolutely.
Or at least the same amount.
Yeah.
It's tough when there's less. All right, Marlene, you had an update regarding the 43D.
Chapter 43D expedited permitting application. As you know, the town submitted an application to the state. We amended our town's zoning bylaws to accept and implement Chapter 43D expedited permitting. We also designated a parcel of property as privately owned. The state reviewed the town's application, and I was... I attended that hearing via conference call. And they tabled our application to October 9th, pending some additional information regarding environmentally regulated areas and proposed development for that parcel of land.
Right.
Since that conference call, I have communicated with the town's engineer, because he has been involved in discussions regarding development of...
Mike?
Five and 10, Michael.
Yep.
And I also met with Erica Geese. So I have pulled information together, and I'm confident that the state will be pleased with the additional information. Because I honestly don't foresee any problems. There was concern that future development of that property could be out in the wetlands, and it will nowhere be near the wetlands at all.
And I know when we met with Erica, and we met with Mike, and then you, when you updated me on this, you could see that just on the surface, you know, the state doing the permitting wouldn't necessarily know that. But I mean, they had a plan for everything that's going to go on out there, and there's going to be nothing that affects anything from a conservation perspective, so.
What I should have included in the application was a draft of a plan for development of that parcel, identifying, you know, where the warehouse and housing...
You can't know every single question they're going to ask us. So thank you for taking the lead on that.
So the Mass Works, this is the same property...
So this is separate from the Mass Works?
It's separate, but it's the same...
They... This parcel of property would need sewer.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So any news on the Mass Works?
No. I know that they make a decision usually in October.
I was going to say, it's coming up soon.
It will be soon.
The... To that point, Diana, and I'm sure you've had conversations. I know I have, Ed has, and letters have gone out to all the various local representatives and contacts that we have. You know, this is the one, so...
Hope so.
But, you know, kidding aside, I certainly take it as a good sign when we were at that conference, and you were there too, last year. And we started talking about Hatfield, and the team from Boston said, "Oh, we're all familiar with Hatfield and the applications." Like, that's what we want to hear. So hopefully, that's a good sign that we're wearing them down. It's a very, very strong application. I mean, in my opinion, but...
It is.
Lot of time and effort from a lot of people.
It's hard for small towns to compete in that big arena. And I talked about that at that conference where we were. But hopefully, this application is strong enough and hits all the high notes that they're looking for in terms of job creation and...
So our next meeting actually is October 9th, so I will report out that evening, because I will have had the conference call earlier today.
Regarding the 43D.
Regarding the 43D application.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I just recently attended the Mass Municipal Personnel... Or actually, it's HR now. It used to be the Personnel Association. It's now the Human Resource Association. That was in North Hampton. It was a day-long event. Very, very interesting. A number of items came up. The paid family medical leave.
Yeah, it's a new one.
There's a summary in your packet, and if you have questions, I'd certainly be glad to try to answer them. This has to be adopted. If we're going to implement it, it would require adoption by authorization from town meeting. And one of the other items that came up, and so if the board would like to have further discussion regarding that paid medical leave, we can... I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at it or just explore anymore of it.
Well, I did look at it, but there's a lot of... It's like filled with links that...
Right.
So the information isn't really here. It's just...
So I do have the whole stack here.
Oh, that's a little like...
So I have reviewed some of it. Much of it is, for several pages, is definitions.
Right.
But I can print out additional information.
Don't we have to adopt this?
You don't have to. You don't have to. You're not required to.
Are we under the threshold? I thought there was different thresholds of employee... Numbers of employees and...
Right, it's based on... I understand it's based on income. And I actually consulted with town council just briefly about this.
Yeah, I saw your email.
Right. So, you know, maybe we look at that when we're negotiating...
Well, I was going to say, a lot of it has to do with the individual unions and their language versus our overall HR policy.
That's right.
So I think we just need to...
That's right.
Like Diana, I kind of perused it and saw the links and have not quite honestly had the opportunity to go through. But I think what you gave us with the overview and Attorney Mullins' brief opinion, or at least the quick question he answered for you, kind of gives us an idea. But, I mean, you hear about this on the news and commercials for it, and the radio and TV, the PFML, so.
Right.
But it is a local option.
But how does that deadline affect us, the October 1st?
Well, that's what I was confused about, because I was talking... Well, that's what I was confused about because I was talking, the treasurer's office was talking to me about it and concerned that, you know, this needs to be implemented. And just the information that was made available at the conference and confirming with town council that it's optional. It's a local, you know, option which has to be approved by town meeting. So I think, as Brian alluded to, is with unions, it could be something that the unions pursue. Then you would negotiate that.
Okay, so you can do it as of October 1st, but you don't have to make your...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. Marlene, perhaps for if we get to going to town meeting or having to make a decision on this, is there any way that we can estimate what the cost would be for the town?
We'd have all that.
Because part of this is estimating. You have to do an estimate of what it is.
We'd have to let the townspeople know that, you know, what they're voting on and what the cost is for that.
The Janus Bill.
Yeah.
Probably familiar with that. There could be changes coming to union arbitration matters. The, there could be some impacts to this. And I know the governor had, did not sign the bill. He's looking at it. It's still under review. The House and Senate enacted legislation. And it would allow unions to charge non-members for costs associated with representation in grievances and arbitrations. Would require employers to provide access to bargaining unit members, including the right to meet with employees during the workday to investigate and discuss grievances. The right to conduct worksite meetings during non-work hours. So this is just a couple of, you know, the bullets highlighted at the, at the meeting that I attended. So just to, I don't know if you've been following it, but just to put the word out there that there could be some serious changes.
You go to a lot of meetings.
I try to, well, not, I miss a lot, too. I just don't have the time.
I'm just teasing you. We appreciate all you do for us, but I know the last three or four topics then when you were at that meeting and this meeting, so towns are lucky to have you, Marlene.
The last meeting I attended was the Small Town Administrators Meeting, annual meeting in June, which was very interesting. And the governor was at that meeting. So that was a pleasure to see him.
So thank you for the updates to the Janus Bill. And then just the, so speaking of the whole getting the ball rolling type thing, so we've got the capital improvement.
Correct.
Time of year to get moving.
I have drafted the guidance letter that would be sent out to all the departments, boards, committees. I included our current, well, it would be this fiscal year's spreadsheet that was approved by the Board of Selectmen and highlighted those projects that we have funded.
Moving forward on, yeah.
Move forward. And just thought that, you know, this would be an opportunity to talk about thoughts and ideas for future planning. Matter of fact, I met with the Finance Committee the other night. Shawn Berry has been, and actually, I didn't put it on this agenda because it just came up the other night, so the board can take it up with another appointment at our meeting on October 9th. Shawn Berry will be the representative from the Finance Committee to Capital Plan.
Oh, good, okay.
And Diana is the representative from the board.
Yep.
So I will, I can review the documents. Typically, I set up a meeting for the committee, just sort of a kickoff, you know, before you actually start having regular meetings.
Right.
So I don't know if the Board of Selectmen, you know, if you'd like to have a discussion going forward for the next planning process. I also included in your packet our capital planning policy, which is certainly a helpful tool.
It is.
I don't know if I have that.
It was attached to the yellow, released in mine.
Yes, I didn't get that.
Oh.
Is it something you gave me last minute? Yeah.
Oh, okay. I had sent it the other day, scanned it, and then said I had hard copies already. Yeah, it was one of them.
Well, so this has been sent out to all the departments already?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, no, okay.
This is what was approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
I highlighted those projects that were approved and voted on.
Sure.
To...
To move forward with.
Yeah. So many of those are already, those projects highlighted are in progress.
Underway.
Right, they're underway.
Okay, so just for people to know, any audience are at home, so the capital improvement plan is always, the attempt is always to have a five-year plan. So, you know, and we ask the departments, just sort of setting the groundwork here, we ask departments for immediate needs, if any, and what they foresee, which of course could change, but what they foresee as being large items, it's over, what, $10,000? Is that the threshold?
Correct.
To be a capital, considered capital item. And so what we'll do is we will present the various departments saying, here's what we had from last year, and here's what was approved, and here's what you had. And then this way, as they're putting it together, they can tweak it and either add something, delete something, you know, whatever the department needs. I mean, that's kind of up to them to decide. And then ultimately, the Capital Improvement Committee, which will be made up of Diana, Shawn...
Jill Robinson from the school.
I was going to say, somebody from the school committee. And then the two, is it still David Keir and Franz Bellacy?
And Franz Bellacy.
Okay. So those five members will ultimately meet and review all the capital projects that are presented, and then bring something forward to the Board of Selectmen as a whole.
Correct.
Down the road. I mean, that's, you know, a few months down the road. But that's kind of the kickoff thing, so...
And so maybe between now and when the Capital Planning Committee meets, the Board of Selectmen and I can have conversations regarding projects that the Board of Selectmen would like to...
Yes, yeah, we should do the same.
The feasibility study for the senior center, that could ultimately move forward. And we would have to do design, you know, schematic drawings, and then eventually actual renovations, implement the project.
Right.
And one other item, and John Novak and I have talked about it, is looking at the adequacy for the cable, cable TV studio, whether we relocate it over here.
Sure, okay.
So I just, going forward between now and December 1st, when the committee meets regularly, other projects that the Board of Selectmen, you know, would like to consider, consider or add to this plan.
Sure. Okay, thank you. And I think, well, not think, I know that ultimately, since Sharon's in the back, I'll just make this comment. So ultimately, what the Capital Planning Committee will need, and especially when they bring it to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we're going to need to know debt that's coming off.
Correct.
Or being added, or whatever. So, you know, that's important, obviously, when we talk about capital projects and how they're going to be funded. We need, you know, we need to have that information. So, again, a lot of that is just so the people at home realize that, you know, how we go about the process. Okay. Awesome, thank you.
So I don't know if you have any more thoughts. I know that you and I had talked about this about earlier in the summer, having more lengthy discussions about the plan and maybe, I don't know, it's really difficult to project out any, for, you know, beyond...
Well, things come up.
Absolutely.
But this is the best you can.
Yeah, you got to have a plan, and then you can tweak it.
You know, that projection, and so that you can...
But I think it's important to look at this plan and look at those projects that did not get approved or moved forward. And, you know, actually, departments should be updating those projects.
They absolutely should. And, you know, it behooves those departments to tell us and the Capital Planning Committee what they need.
That's right.
I mean, it's not, you know, we shouldn't be, I guess ultimately, we do sort of decide what gets brought forward, or the town ultimately decides.
Right.
But it's really up to them to make the case for why they need a particular, whatever it is, you know, capital item. And so I think the letter, what the intention is of capital planning, last year's just a memory jogger for people and for those departments to know what they had there. I think it's all in one place, and they can start reviewing within their own departments exactly what it is they need.
Okay. And I've been part of the process before. I actually enjoyed it. It's interesting to really project out and, you know, make sure that you're, you know, doing things in a, in a order that makes sense and a fiscally responsible way. So I enjoy the process as well.
The only, I don't know, negative or fallback to this process is when you're reviewing, when a department is submitting their project on December 1st, and it's a project that may not get off the ground until the following year, say, or after annual town meeting, those costs change between. And we have gone to town meeting, and the number has changed from what was submitted.
And it doesn't go down.
No, it does not.
Right.
It's amazing. Never goes down.
I take part in the tip meetings, you know, the transportation improvement plan, and those just, those costs skyrocket over years. It's really interesting how putting things off just ultimately costs so much money, so...
Mm-hmm, it does. So that wraps up everything I have under the Town Administrators Report.
All right, great, thank you. I like the way, I like the way this was presented, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. So, so we're into, onto continued old business. Excuse me. So the town hall renovations update, I know we have something from Architectural EL in our packet.
I included meeting minutes from the previous meeting for you, just to get an idea of the activity that's been going. We have project meetings on Thursday morning. Ed from the Board of Selectmen is present.
Yes, thank you, Ed, for attending.
Thank you, Ed.
And Phil Genovese, our DPW Director, myself, the architect is there. Kevin, although Kevin did mention last week, he's, he has another member of his staff, Craig Spice, who has been attending those meetings, and Kevin may not necessarily be at those meetings going forward, but he will be available in case we...
Long as there's representation.
Yeah, absolutely. So we meet on Thursday mornings and just discuss the project and any, you know, issues or concerns. Nothing, nothing serious at this point. So the abatement process is pretty well complete.
Great.
As most people will see, the exterior ramp has been removed. A lot of noise.
I bet.
Yeah, right now, I think the contractor is adhering to his schedules. He's got his schedules out. The meetings have been very productive. They're moving right along. It seems like the general contractor is working well right now with all the subs, so, and they got good communication. So right now, everything seems to be moving at a good pace.
The water line is being installed for the pump.
Saturday, you had it shut down and...
That's right.
That's for the fire pump.
Yeah, that worked out great. I mean, the, being able to do it off of that instead of...
There was, there were some issues with this line because it was a private line. It was six-inch. It's, I think it was over 1,100 GPM for this line, but if we came off of that line, then there were some other issues with the owner. There were some other issues if there was any future expansion.
Out back.
Yeah, there was all these...
All right, so we ended up coming back out this way? Okay.
It just seemed more, it seemed a lot better to come, plus this is an eight-inch line. So if we ever upgrade School Street to a higher line, which is, which might be needed down the road in the future, then we already have the eight-inch line in place, so...
But the flow was fine, right? I mean, wasn't that our issue? Once upon a time, wasn't there...
Well, the issue previously was that we could use street pressure.
Yeah.
That was the original. And then when they went to test, they said, we can't use street pressure, something's changed. And we said, wait a minute, what changed? So they retested, and what happened was, they said, we don't have enough of pressure because it's three stories.
Yep.
So that's why they had to put in the fire pump. That was one of the delays we had. And they, the fire pump's going to go in this corner, so...
Gotcha, okay, so there's the pump for it.
That was one of the issues. And that went back four or five years ago.
A while.
Seven or whatever.
All right, thank you for the update.
When we met with, with the architect and the assistant project manager last week, we also, the architect is putting together three options for a, for a back, a ramp in the back of the building.
Oh.
And so he had talked with the Architectural Access Board. Architectural Access Board, you know, did state that there is a section of the codes that is not clear, and it has caused problems with other, other projects.
Right, so we'll get some pricing and more information. That's, down the road, we're going to have to meet and discuss that.
Correct.
But if we discuss it before town meeting, then we'd be at a better, because I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of effort from the COA to have the ramp in the back because that's where everybody parks.
Right.
Which makes more sense. And there's, so, I mean, that's another, that's a future discussion.
Right.
But with the ramp in the back, the way they have it designed for the sketch would, would come down like 30, 25 feet off of the grass and then go right underneath the stairs. So you're right, almost to the level, because for handicapped ramps, it's one inch per foot. So when you go 25 feet, you're already down 25 inches. You come in another 12 feet, you're down 30, 40 inches. And you, you just need a little bit of a ramp where the stairs are.
Right.
And you'd have like an L. So that would work out.
Yep.
That would make a lot of people happy, I think.
It would.
Because that's what I'm hearing, so...
It also makes more sense.
Yes, because you park there...
Than, correct.
Because if you have mobility issues, you park here, now you got to go up the ramp, you got to go to the elevator, you got to go down, you got to go across.
I agree.
So anyways.
It'll all, it'll all work out.
Right.
Yeah, more importantly. Okay, thank you.
That is moving along.
Ed, thank you for the update. And Marlene, thank you for the update. And Main Street's paved.
Yes.
And a cake is in.
And the cake is in.
Cake arrived, yeah.
We didn't announce that, kidding.
You'd announce the cake!
We forget. Boy, that was...
Biggest birthday cake ever.
And it really looks terrific. So we have to thank Bob Betzel and his crew because he really was, you know, spearheaded that effort. And it was really quite an effort. I mean, there was a lot of back and forth with Westfield and with, the West Tech, the company that actually designed and built it, and they really worked closely with them. And then he had a crew from town, they had trucks from Lashco.
Yep.
Donated to move it here. It was really quite a scene. We positioned ourselves to watch it come into town, and it was, it was really great. And so I know there was Bobby Betzel, I think Billy Shea, John Holehut.
Yeah, the chief was here, and the assistant chief was here, and we came down to take a look.
I'm talking about Friday night when it came in, but then it was all assembled Saturday. And it really does look good. So it's not completed. So townspeople who have taken a look at it, it is not completed. There'll be, there's some work for the candles still, and then obviously, a cake topper, but that is, that is high on the priority list for the 350th Committee.
I saw a, what, a time-lapse video compliments of...
I had heard that they already...
John, thank you for that time lapse, too.
Did they already sell the cake to another town? I heard that there was a rumor.
It's not already sold, but we're already exploring that.
Wow.
Yeah, so we'll have it for a time, and then we'll, we'll sell it to the next...
350th.
350th.
Nice.
Of which there are a handful anyway, I think, this year, we'll be celebrating.
Right. Right. So, again, Bobby Betzel thought of everything, and that's part of, part of the whole cake process was what happens afterwards, so...
Right.
Yeah. Very good. All right.
The plan was to have it lit by the luminary.
Lit on luminary for the first time, and, sorry?
Nope, you say it.
I was, I will mention as well that there will be an opportunity for townspeople to sponsor candles so that we can, and I think it's going to be inexpensive for people to be able to sponsor a candle. So, you know, we've been seeking sponsorships, but a lot of them have been larger dollar amounts. But now we'll be...
You'll take it all. It all adds up.
But there'll be opportunities for people to sponsor at different levels and in different ways.
That's important.
So then anybody who wants to help at any level will be able to do that, and candles will be a nice way to, you know, I think that they'll be ultimately a sign of, you know, listing everybody who sponsored a candle, so, you know, it's a nice, I'll sponsor one in each of my kids' names, you know, so that those names are on there.
And speaking of luminary, it is on Saturday, December 21st this year, correct?
Yes, Saturday, December 21st.
The Saturday before Christmas.
Correct.
Before Christmas Eve.
Eve, before Christmas Eve.
Saturday night before Christmas Eve.
Right.
What's the date, guys?
December 21st.
Saturday, December 21st.
Yep, yeah.
Actually, we were going to look to include a little insert into the bills that are going out.
Right, because it is a change, so we want to make sure people are aware of that.
Right, we've said it a few times. I think the word's out there, but just for those people that might come back, you know, their bills might be sent elsewhere, and then they come back, you know, whoever knows that if we could get something, just one, I mean, just a little slip, I think, a reminder. I think it's important, you know, we don't want anyone to not realize it.
Right. And then the 350th will also do, you know, some publicity about it because it is the big lighting of the cake as well as...
I had a brief conversation with the fire chief earlier today. I know he is actually having signs made up, and he's going to get those up. So I, I don't know if he was thinking that, you know, that would be an option as opposed to including the insert.
I think it's both because they usually do that every year anyways.
But they must need new ones because they said Sunday.
Right, right. Having new ones, yeah.
Yeah, and we'd like to thank, or I'd like to thank, on behalf of the board, it's the Haffield Firefighters Association. It actually spearheads the whole luminary thing. Used to be volunteers, and it used to be Peter, but the last few years, it's been the firefighter. So they're actually the ones that spearheaded, worked with the 350th Committee this year from a date perspective. So it's not through the Board of Selectmen necessarily, you know, directly, just FYI for people who think that ultimately we're the ones...
Well, maybe we can find some volunteers. The water and sewer bills have been stuffed, so maybe we can find some volunteers to, to insert, insert a notice, but...
They've been stuffed, but not sealed?
Yes.
Perfect. So do you actually need a motion?
Sealed. They're not sealed, right, Sharon?
They're not sealed.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll make, so you need a motion, right, to include something in the mailing? Is that the deal?
Well, actually, the Board of Selectmen have to authorize it. By statute, the Board of Selectmen authorize inserts with, with any tax bills.
Oh, didn't know that. I'll make a motion that we include an insert about this year's luminary date in, with the water and sewer bills.
That are already stuffed. Is there, motion's been made and seconded?
I brought it with me just in case you're just seeing that right at the bottom of the page.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, I just want to thank Sharon. Kidding aside, thank Sharon and everybody else who's involved with stuffing those bills. I know it's a pain in the neck, and I'm sorry we didn't think of it sooner, but I think it's, I just think it's important to have something out there. So thank you, we appreciate it. So motions made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Council on Aging, Council on Aging Center Improvements.
Improvements, right. So they were charged with taking a look at their existing space downstairs.
Right.
And they met and put together what they believe is a reasonable plan based on their needs. This plan would mean that the entire basement would be occupied by the senior center. It would mean relocating two offices downstairs. Two other offices, the Board of Health and the Building Inspector.
Oh, right. Okay.
Is there a proposal of where they'd go?
Well, there has been some discussion. There's an office being built at the highway garage that possibly if the DPW Director goes there, then that would free up an office. There's some thought for the Town Administrator and Executive Assistant to occupy that space. So then there would be what is now the Town Administrator's Office, and...
Well, where the COA is now up here, that...
Where the COA is, is the accountant's office. If the town were to hire an accountant in-house, the accountant needs some space. But if not, if we're going to continue to outsource it, then that space would become available.
I mean, I think the proposal that's been brought forward is reasonable, I mean, to me. The COA knows their own needs and wants. Ultimately, you know, it's going to go to an architect to see...
So that's the next step, to do a feasibility study based on these plans, which I was working on, the specification. Based on, on these plans, which I was working on the specification, so we, the town is required to put together an RFQ-
Yeah, yep.
And solicit qualifications from, from architects for the study.
Yep.
So we will do that.
Right.
As you see, the first page, they've outlined, and actually, this is, actually was submitted by Jane Betzel previously, so that has not changed.
Actually, on the first page, when you look at all the space and stuff, which I've done downstairs, is, we do have the space downstairs to meet their needs, and even if we move some walls, we even have more space downstairs.
Yeah, I mean, this proposal does, you know, eliminate walls and those poles that are there, that are, and that would really create such a nice, versatile space.
Right, yeah, they like to see that wall between the dining room and the hallway-
Right.
Removed, open up that area.
Right, which would also make it a little brighter, it's not, you know-
Right, yeah, it would.
And in the back, I mean, you got, you got dead space back there, I mean, that's, that could all be part of the open space plan, you put in a nice flooring down there, and do the walls, and that will-
Particularly if there's gonna be a ramp there, it needs to be a welcoming space, it's not right now.
And if the ramp is there, goes in, you'd be perfect. It will fit their needs as they ask-
But we agree.
For the next few years, until ever they-
Yeah.
Down the road want a building.
Yep.
Right.
No, I think they did a good job bringing this forward, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I will prepare that feasibility study based on these plans-
Perfect.
For study, just didn't know if the Board had any input into this.
You need a motion on that, or not?
No, I don't believe so, no, I think that the idea was to have a feasibility study, we have money authorized for the study, it was just a matter of what would the Council on Aging like?
Right, and I think for the people at home, maybe some in the audience, we did, a few weeks ago, actually, the Board of Selectmen and the COA Director Jerry, and the COA Board of Directors met, and it was, that was the only topic of discussion, I thought, bless you.
Thank you.
I thought the meeting went very well, I think that everybody was upfront, I think that some ideas and suggestions that, not ideas, ideas and suggestions were discussed, I also think that through the conversation, people realized where other people were coming from, and might not have understood that in the beginning, that, you know, there is a lot of support for, for the COA and the seniors, so, out of that was the request from the Board of Selectmen and the COA Directors to bring forward, you know, a plan, and so that's what they did, and that's what we're discussing tonight, so, just if people are wondering where, where the topic came from, so. Mike?
Just to add to that, we also acknowledged in that discussion that there was already $325,000 voted by the community to address this, this issue, so there, there's money available as well.
Thank you.
And hopefully we can do it for that.
Good. All right, anything else on the COA improvements, comments, that is?
No, as far as the COA, I did get to meet with the new Housing Authority Director, and, and working with the COA, she even mentioned during renovation, if there was a need for space, they would work, work on something over at the Housing Authority.
Oh, that's great, I haven't had a chance to meet her yet.
Yeah, so.
Awesome.
Just letting you, letting you know that's-
That's great, thank you.
They've now established a good working relationship with each other, which I think is, is good.
I think that's very important, given them.
Yeah, the Director and, Housing Director and COA Director met several weeks ago, I think shortly after the new Housing Director was hired.
I think they have a lot in common, so they should, I mean, that's, that's good.
Yeah, I think that would be a really terrific.
Okay, great, thank you. Human Resource Policy Review regarding the travel policy.
Travel Policy, yes, so I have-
This is, I'm sorry, Marlene, so this is just, this is the continuation of our-
We're getting to the end of that policy.
Of our reviewing the entire HR policy, section by section by section, which-
We've done a lot, right?
We've done a lot, yeah, and approving it section by-
It's taken longer than it should have, honestly, but-
We got lots of stuff going on, so, so thank you, but I just, again, so people understood where, why we might be doing it section by section, that's the reason why. So, I'm sorry, Marlene, so-
This, what you have in front of you is the existing policy, with the exception of what I have added in red, and if the Board accepts that, then, accepts that additional language, or proposed edits, then the Board can vote on the revised-
The revisions are fine with me, there's the provision at the end here that says, "An employee who violates the travel policy will have travel privileges reviewed, and may have the privileges suspended." Should there be language in there that, I mean, if, if someone gets travel reimbursement that they shouldn't, they should be required to reimburse the town for those, but it sort of doesn't, it says, or be subject to other applicable-
Other applicable consequences.
Excuse me, consequences.
Right.
But I mean, I think it should be spelled out, that we would expect to be, you know, compensated if we reimburse for travel that was not in accordance with this policy.
Okay.
That would be the only, that was the only thing I, only thought I had on it.
Yeah, I think that's a good add, I mean, they could, they could be also doing something, also what could happen is a violation just of, of the guidelines, not necessarily financial, you know, but, you know, whatever, whatever cleans it up is fine with me, the intent is there, you know, so.
Right, but I mean, it doesn't say that they would, could potentially be required to-
Right.
Pay back.
So I will, just made a note.
I mean, and, and on one hand, there are a few of the items I addressed that are not being, gonna be paid, like, eight does sort of say, "No payment for the falling," 10 says, "No payment for the falling," I mean, it, there are some of the issues, but if you wanna make it clear, maybe that's even better to-
I mean, because if, if, for some reason, those things are still reimbursed, or you find out that it's not in accordance with the policy for other reasons, we should expect to-
Reimbursement.
Be reimbursed.
Any, you know, you can just add a, any-
Subject to-
Any, any, I don't know what the word, I'm looking for an adjective, any something reimbursement will, will need to be-
Erroneous reimbursement.
Erroneous, or illegal, or erroneous, erroneous, I think.
Yeah, I think erroneous is better than illegal.
Not in compliance with this policy.